It's seven oh one, I think that we've got everyone uh who's gonna be attending for today on the working group that Matt Bowen uh mentioned earlier that he was gonna be unable to attend so. I'll call this meeting to order for the August fifteenth uh MBTA section three A working group. Um so thank you everyone for attending, so I'll do uh uh attendance, so us starting with uh Matt Lowry. Uh Robin Greenberg.
Yeah.
Greg McIntosh.
Present.
Julie Smith Galvin.
Yes, yeah.
And Aaron Kokinda.
Yeah.
And myself as well. So first order of business is the approval of the July eighteenth twenty twenty-three meeting minutes uh Aaron pushed those out earlier today. Have people had a chance to uh review them or do uh people need more time to review them for uh next meeting?
I wasn't able to read them, um I only saw the email a few months ago.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance either.
I apologize for the late push out. I wanted to send everything at once, but I should have just sent those earlier, so my apologies.
Yeah.
We've all been there.
Yeah. Yeah, in that case, do um do people either want to push that the uh? Approval of those meeting minutes to the next meeting, or do people still want to take a vote? I'm won't entertain either motion.
I'd say we put it off.
And you know, if we if we put them off, can we put them on the website as pending? Or do we have to wait to put them on the website?
That's a good question. I don't know, I could get an answer by the end of this meeting or in the next few minutes.
But why don't you why don't you find out? I just wanna give people chances to kind of see what we've been doing.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm I'm comfortable with them going up as pending. Approval.
Okay. Great, I'll ask.
Okay, in that case, um if it's okay with people, I I what I propose we do is as Aaron's getting that answer, we can revisit that topic uh deeper in the meeting. So with that being said, so the in terms of the 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 me of the meeting, so there's a handful of things that we're looking to to try to finalize at this point. One of them being the the finalized map, I think we had some pretty good direction the last time in terms of trying to finalize the uh the five area section. We took a lot of time to look at how we're gonna make a contiguous district. Uh so Aaron was working with the GIS department and uh we've got. Is some additional information as it relates to the the map. Um so going through and drawing drawing the the hundred foot buffers. Uh so Aaron and I took a look earlier today in terms of some of the the questions, some of the nuanced areas that we have to look at. So what you're seeing is the. We did an overlay, this is just the crude blue beam markup based on some of the offsets from the GIS mapping that we'll have to go and then further refine, but. What this shows is we've got the map that we're gonna be issuing to the state, which is based on a parcel by parcel analysis. But obviously, we need to translate that into what we as a as a working group and then eventually planning board. Then be referred to town council and then town meeting would actually pass as the actual district. So if you bear with me for a second, I'll just zoom in, for example. So. You know, defining what the what the boundaries of some of these, these are act these this district's actually gonna look like. And going through that analysis, what appeared is if there's a handful of spots where. Parcels are out that would theoretically have been included when we originally looked at this are not. Or vice versa, parcels that we thought were gonna exclude. Look like they're included if you kind of draw what seems like a a best, you know. The intended center lines or offsets that we talked about. So if other members of the group group agree, I'd like to just kind of go through some of these nuances. Drive consensus and then be able to provide Aaron and the um town staff and the GIS department clear direction in terms of trying to finalize some maps, to push it out. We can press print, start the process of engaging with all of the other relevant boards and um councils. And start that public engagement process.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So just starting starting on the 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 most western side, you know, some of these ones in the northwest corner seem pretty straightforward. You know, center line of Elm Square, center line of the MBTA right of way. You know, the these all kind of capture this where it gets a little trickier, kind of highlighted this kind of generalized area. We spent a lot of time talking along these uh these roadways um around down Cedar Street. And so I'm gonna delete this, so I kind of drew kind of a best guess. In terms of what we were talking about, but basically what it looks to me is if and the way we talked about previously is was when we write the. The actual bylaw, if a lot is not a hundred percent included, it would theoretically be excluded. From the overlay, so for example, this lot that I'm highlighting right here would be excluded because there's this sliver that's that's not included. So I the the where it gets a little tricky and I wanted to look for guidance from this board. And then so we could make sure that we are in agreement and when we finalize these maps, we can make sure Aaron's including the right dip, you know. Items within the the analysis of the state, if you bear with me and I zoom in a little bit, or by Hillside Ave. It looked to me as if if we had an offset off of Cedar, the backside of Cedar Terrace coming down. It captures these three lots extra from what we had talked about previously. We could either, you know, utilize something like this, or we could amend. The district, so as it gets past Cedar Terrace, there's, you know, the lot would come down like this and bump out. I don't necessarily think it matters one way or the other, I think we just need to make a decisions and provide guide guidance to Aaron, I felt like. The way that I drew it would probably be cleaner from a you're just doing an offset off of Cedar theoretically. And then you capture a couple of extra parcels, which I think don't materially change in terms of the the intent, but I wanted to make sure this board was was. In alignment before we provided direction.
So just so I understand, so if we stuck with this line that you drew here, these two right on Hillside. Or the I'm sorry, this one on Hillside and then this other, I guess, three on Hillside right here going down that one, then south. Two, three would be included, so that would be added to the compliance model too, which I don't think would change the figures significantly or at all, really.
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, I I think there's a handful of parcels that are gonna either be included or excluded based on some of the decisions we're gonna make. So I think we just need to figure out what we want to do and then based on that have the actual GIS map drawn and then determine, make sure that we're we're actually. Including or not including them, but per the finalized map that we're actually gonna be voting on.
I mean, the parcels don't have frontage on center or Cedar Street rather, so it's not kind of consistent from that messaging, but I understand. From a. Offset from a center of center street, I see how they get included. So I mean, they're hilly lots, so you know, they're kind of hard to build build on anyways, so but that's someone else's problem, but. I guess I my thought was that we were only doing things with frontage on center and Cedar.
Yeah, so I you're a hundred percent right, that was exactly the 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 border or the tenor of the conversation, so if we wanted to amend it. In order to exclude those, then I think we just had have to figure out how we want to. To draw that and then make sure that we're, you know, we provide Aaron with the guidance to make sure we get it drawn that that way in the finalized zoning.
Um I I do agree, just. Quick look on street view, they are hilly lots. Best part to leave them out. It's a one-way street, I'm in thoughts. I think the intention be just to be perfect on Cedar, so I'm I'm in favor of not.
So in that case, and bear with me for a second if and see if I can kind of try to capture. The geometry of this, but we probably want to do something akin to. You're basically right when you get to the the this Y section. You'd have this taper down. I'm trying to think of how you draw, so you put you have an offset off of Cedar that comes along to here and then when it splits. I guess. I guess it would almost come up kind of split from. The this intersection up to the this point of Cedar Terrace, question mark?
So then you're excluding. Right?
I'm not sure if that's the.
Yeah, what's your rationale for bringing it down that far? It's that I don't understand that part.
I'm just trying to think.
Instead of just doing that.
Uh yeah, knowing that property right there, um if you went a little further, yeah, down a little bit right to that corner. Um that one is kind of facing Cedar, I'm not sure what that exact address is, the one south, yeah. Um so yeah, that we have included, so I'm wondering if you could just bring it to, I know we're not doing by property lines, but.
It's more, it's more of, I'm just trying to figure out where where to make it so it's an easily definable point. So when when we're drawing the actual map, it's clear, you know what I mean, like it's clear. Um that's really more my rationale in terms of anything else, I I I agree, I think that. Conceptually, this what we drew drew makes the most sense, so if it makes if it makes sense, Aaron, maybe the the feedback would be to take it from. The edge of this point over and make it so it's kind of almost like that.
Yeah. And you're gonna leave this, so I can take a snapshot of all the edits we made, correct?
Yeah, I'll also push you, I'll push you the the final version of this.
Okay, alright.
And and then the maybe the this, the the zoning lot would come up to the point of Cedar, the end of Cedar Terrace.
Okay.
Down to that, so this is. So then there'd be an offset, and I would say Aaron might what I might, I think the the consensus of the group is to find the depth of these parcels. Maybe offset five feet or something like that to make sure we're including all of them and then just define whatever that is uh as a on an as-needed basis.
Okay.
Unless anyone disagrees, that's kind of that was my kind of logic that would make the most sense in terms of you to have an actual dimension string. You know, that you could put in the on the zoning map. So this would actually read, you know, call it a hundred and. Five feet or, you know, a hundred and twenty-five feet or something like something rational in terms of a lot number, but it's not to be not to. To overhang these somewhat, but not a ton.
Okay.
Yeah. Um so then coming down here, I think it's kind of the same thing, right, where as these parcels, there'd be an offset right here, similar logic. Come down off, this would be aligned with the center line of Chestnut. We'd have some sort of another offset off of Walnut that would capture all these maybe plus five or ten feet off the backside of them to make sure we include all those parcels. Then coming down to Harrington Court, center, you know, center line of Gould to center line of Harrington Court. On this one, this is another one where I wanted to make sure it was in alignment with the rest of the group. Kind of take Harrington Court, have it continue until you hit the center line of Albion. I think what that does is that it that captures all of these parcels, captures the playground, which obviously doesn't really. Matter from a compliance perspective. You pick up a little bit of this parcel, but it's excluded because the whole thing isn't included, but it just makes so it's kind of a clean line that looked like it captured what we're looking for.
That's what I was thinking when we previously talked, so.
Yeah. Um so then I come up Albion Street, that's pretty straightforward. I figure there's probably some sort of offset we include right here, this is the seven eleven, which we talked about not including because we didn't from a compliance modeling perspective, so. It feels if we just come up with, you know, uh an offset, Aaron, that, you know, captures the majority of this parcel, but and then, you know, just define whatever that is. To make sure you're, you know, in in not including that commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Area, so maybe it's as close as it's this gets as close to this. You know, whichever is a whole dimension that, you know, makes sense. You see what I mean? Yeah, I was thinking you come off of Murphy Street, or I'm sorry, Murray Street. And if this is, you know, a hundred feet or whatever it is, so it's, you know, make sure you 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 have a little bit of a buffer.
Comes down there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But I I figure you have it, the line be parallel to Murphy, uh so it's Murray Street, because it makes it so it's an easier in in easy thing to define.
Okay, yep.
So then you come up Murray, you hit Chestnut, come back over, and then I think you hit North Ave, center line of North Ave coming up. And it kind of comes up until you hit, you know, I think you have a little bit of a jog, so you're not including this area on the other side of the. Uh and you kind of hit the center line of the MBTA right away, and then that. Brings you back up to the start of that. I know we kind of just flew through that, but does that make sense to everyone slash is everyone good with that kind of generalized methodology?
And I apologize, I think there was some confusion on my part too, but uh I think it's good that we're talking about this too, then looking at these properties too that were in or out and um gives me better clarification too. Now I have a better understanding, so.
I just have a question on that seven eleven property there. Does. Sort of making almost, I don't know, and uh I know there is some other odd. Jogs, if you want to call it. Does this almost make it more more, I I mean, it's all arbitrary, right, but. Trying to exclude this one property for one business. And it being in odd shape, it it looks pretty arbitrary. I guess I don't really have a view at the end of the day either way, if we want to exclude it, it's a, you know, seven eleven, it's outside of our, you know, essential business district. The only thing I worry about is. You know, trying too hard to keep one lot in, uh one lot out.
I don't think it's a bad observation, I did have that same thought when I was trying to figure out if it made sense, I think the.
And if it was something else, then maybe I would care more if it was, you know, down, not something else is in business, but somewhere else, if it was right on Main Street or something like that. Yeah, and a main commercial corridor, then it I think it would make more sense. And probably be more um. Easy to explain our rationale.
Uh I think the only thing, the only thing that I would. Uses it as the defense case would be, I think that this is going to be viewed as an emerging uh commercial cluster. When you look at, there's the the laundromat lot, which I think is, I think it's this lot right here.
Yeah.
Essentially gonna have a ground floor retail space. Theoretically, we are slated for some on foundry, some additional the larger scale development that may have some ground floor retail. And you have the ground floor retail that's, you know, a little bit sighted closer, and you have this large church parcel, so it's kind of. It's kind of in like a uh. A light business district already, it's kind of on the edge of that as you're transitioning into the residential. I think you that would be the argument you would make going the other way, but I definitely shared that same observation when I was looking at this as well.
Is it zone mixed use or is it just business?
Uh, we said that. I think it's just kind of the general residence, hold on one sec.
And I think that's a really good observation, Jim, because I do see that Foundry Street as becoming kind of a little bit more of a business district or a commercial district.
Sorry, that's business on our current zoning map.
It's business, okay.
And I I don't have a view either way, it's just more that we we say that, but then the the rest of that side of the street is is left in.
But if it's currently zoned as business, if we were to include it, we would. We're saying that it doesn't have to be business, it could be multifamily up to our limits. So.
I think that's the rationale, the business district also has that same uh pathway, it's just you have a special permit in lieu of a as of right.
If the goal is to keep a business, I would not include it.
I I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not trying to get into the the philosophy of what we think of that lot, it's more of, do we feel that there's a. Well, a a gain uh enough to be for the risk of looking arbitrary and capricious for one lot. And if and if the consensus is yes, then that's fine, I'm I'm just asking a question.
The only other thing I'll add too is if you go south um on Albion Street, like. The parcel next to seven eleven right on Albion, uh I'm sorry, uh go north, I mean, south, like going towards, I guess it'd be. Going towards Albion, um the small little parcel, this parcel here, this larger parcel, I think there's some business. Businesses already and it is known business, but um I think we already discussed that, that we're fine with that being housing, um. So, um. Just something to think about as these are known business as well, how do you draw? Why do I not know how to do that already?
You go to view options and annotate usually?
It doesn't seem to be available right now.
I turned on. And I guess I'm thinking about it from a tax standpoint too, right? I mean, we make more money on businesses than we do on residential. Um so preserving some is more likely to be business might. Be worthwhile, but I don't want to be capricious either, right? If some are business, then we should just be consistent, probably where it's continuous.
Uh I think we just say it's a business, we want to maintain it, there's nothing wrong with that. So. I don't have a problem with ending that.
Okay.
My only thing too is um is the ones I was just talking about the parcels too, do you think will get pushed back? Well, if you're gonna save that one, why aren't you trying to? Sorry, not to get in the weeds, but just trying to think of what our argument is, these other lots right below it, um like that one there uh right there.
What are they right now?
So I know there's like a some sort of spa type thing, there was a dental use there before, um.
You're talking all those ones right there, kind of in this block?
Correct, I think that's where it goes up to the business district. Um goes up one, two, three, includes the four lots plus half of the other lot. So just I I I, you know, it's just if that argument comes out, um.
So let me just understand, so it doesn't change that they can still put a business there, it's just they could also by right do multifamily, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
I think I'm okay with it.
I think some of the arguments is already um. Looks like an apartment or condominium building in there in between the mixed. Retail or area on Albion Street, so.
Can I do mind if I share my screen real quick? Yeah.
How about it?
I just was gonna share just so we could put this to rest, so here's seven eleven. Um. So yes, it's like one story, that that small parcel you see? So there's like a spa like thing, a dental, this is already residential, but it is um. Already zone business, and then there's this like, I think it's an at-home type care. Uh center right here that almost looks residential as well, and then I think this one next to it is also included in that business district, but. Again, you could still do a business there, but by rights, someone could come in and do housing as well, so. Just want everyone to just see, so we're all on the same page. Jim, it's all yours.
And this may not even come up, as no one may ever ask us, just wanted to, you know, to. Put it out.
Oh, it's a good point.
Yep. So I think uh I think for right now, it 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 sounds like a consensus is to keep it as is, and then we can, if if, you know, Greg, you know, I think they're bringing that devil's advocate voice. Probably is useful in terms of being able to justify those decisions. Um the other thing, and I apologize, I probably should have mentioned this, these big magenta lines that you're seeing are hundred foot offsets off of the center line of these. Principal right of ways, so Albion North and Main. So as we go, it it's a little bit on this western side, not as much, but you'll see that becomes more important in some of these other. Uh districts, so I'll move over to the kind of this middle orange district, so I'll start with kind of the easy part. Um figured center line of Church Street, nothing controversial there. Then you come over and you hit this big magenta line, and this is where some of these questions start to pop up. So if we follow this hundred foot right of way to define the edge of the boundary, the first thing you get into is. We talked about excluding this parcel right here, looks to me as if we're probably gonna include it. My sense is based on the previous conversations we've had, I don't necessarily think that's a big deal to folks, but before I. Before we put pen to paper, I wanted to make sure that everyone felt the same way, um this is kind of by that. Think this is the gas station, and then this is, I think it's already multifamily residential on this parcel already.
So include that, yeah, I I don't have a problem with that. I won't speak for the rest of the group.
I think that's fine, I the weight parcel is that um foreign car mechanic, right?
Uh yes.
Okay.
Okay. So then, as you come down here, right, so all of these other ones, right, this is, these are all excluded excluded uh from the district. Theoretically, this larger parcel right here um could be, you know, subdivided A and R'd, and then on the eastern half of, or yeah, the eastern half. But and then you get down into this, this is the section where to provide the contiguous district. That meets the the minimum requirement, we just elected to include kind of this little bump out on North Ave. We talked about, I think the direction, Aaron, unless, again, the other people in the group can disagree, but to to kind of. Get this to where we want to be, it seemed like took this existing setback on these properties. Align the district with that till you hit North Ave, so then these two districts touch. Right? And that this would theoretically be excluded, this continues to be excluded, but these two parcels are included in order to have the two districts touch. Um then, so this is where I wanted to still check, so this is a hundred foot off the right of way. You start getting, and I'm just gonna zoom in for a second just for clarity, you start getting into some of these districts where you're starting to clip a couple of these. Where I think it would make sense to have this cheat, so instead of being a hundred foot offset, it's closer to seventy-five, because otherwise I think we're gonna lose. This lot and this lot, because they're gonna be partially outside of the district. If that makes sense to folks.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason not to go to seventy-five, you know, what's the the risk of doing that?
The only, we picked a hundred just as a as a placeholder.
Mm-hmm.
So it was. I don't want to say arbitrary, but we we picked a hundred because we figured that if a hundred foot offset off the right of way would grab enough of the lots fronting. That those main quarters that we could maintain our commercial by excluding. Lots that had frontage.
Mm-hmm.
My theory would go into seventy-five would be that it still to, when I'm looking at all these parcels, it doesn't. It didn't look like it would include any lots that we're trying to exclude. But it would include these lots that I think we're trying to include, but are cur would currently theoretically be excluded. And then you kind of get into some of the same con conversations, uh actually, it doesn't happen anymore off of north. But, you know, and this one right here. Looks like it's kind of on the edge.
Then I would say, yeah, reduce the setback in order to ensure you capture the first parcel. Outside of North Ave frontage.
So it'd just be those two parcels right there on North Ave or the seventy-five foot, correct? Jim?
So I I believe that this one would, that that's all that would impact, that there's three or four more locations, we're gonna have the same kind of conversation.
No, but wouldn't you do the whole street instead of just?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I thought Aaron was saying that only certain parcels have.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I I I thought you were moving the whole line, that way it's.
I'm talking about moving the whole line, because then you'd have seventy-five feet up the whole of North Ave.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Just for the sake of making it easy to understand what what the boundary actually is.
And you do that on both sides just for consistency, is that what you're saying?
Uh so I don't think.
A hundred on one, seventy-five on the other.
Honestly, I think what we're gonna have to do it, I think we're gonna have to define it on an ad as needed basis, because I also think. So not to jump ahead, I think that there's three or four locations where we want to go from a hundred to seventy-five. I think actually on Main Street, well, I want to increase of greater than a hundred because of the width of Main Street. So I think we want to do it where we're actually defining each one of those offsets. Based on the intent of the zoning process, honestly. But if I, so if I I'll, I can kind of jump to. This may, you know, this is Albion Street, this is kind of the other one where this conversation comes up a lot, so if you look. We've got this lot, which currently is excluded because it's overhanging right here. And then you've got a number of lots over here where the backside of the lots are overhanging the district, so theoretically those would also be excluded. So the question. So theoretically, those would also be excluded. So the question ends up becoming, does it make sense to have this drive down? So I don't even know if seventy five feet will get us there, if it needs to be actually shorter to cover the backside of these lots, or do we just say? If the, you know, for lack of a better term, the cost of doing business, this lot isn't gonna be included. Because it's too fat and this lot on off of Albion is too narrow. You know, and then you're also on this side of the street, it's kind of the same thing cuz you're losing, I believe you're losing this lot right here.
That almost could be. Good though, right? But if we're gonna include that other smaller one, cuz that's a big lot. Just from a density calculation perspective.
A hundred percent.
If you were to basically, you know, essentially replace that one for one for that one that says okay to include.
Kind of all about consistency too, though, sometimes um.
But you can think about it, consistence consistency as in the defined. Uh. Line, the line is consistently defined.
Hmm.
Rather than, hey, we moved it on one side of the street to include the lots that we.
Mm hmm.
Went around looking when we went lot by lot, but on the other side of the street, it's a different because we're trying to include. The lot by lot, which we said we weren't doing, but we are in reality.
Yeah, that's why I I personally where where I, when I was looking at this, I thought it made sense is. We set a hundred as a as a, you know, as a kind of an arbitrary number in order to get something that we could look at. We've got the the hundred shown on the map. I personally think that having, you know, this one get clipped by a seventy, a hundred foot offset, so it's excluded. And same thing with some of these, I don't think that's necessarily consistent with what the intent was. So I think from my perspective, if we made it so all three of the ones that we're just looking at go to seventy five and it's just a consistent seventy five for those three. That to me, and then if there's a lot or two that we still lose anyway. So be it, but to your point, Greg, I think that we shorn it up, I think we probably gain a couple more of these lots and then we just. If we lose a couple of them, then it is what it is, but we do it for the sake of consistency with how we're defining it, so we're not spot zoning.
Makes sense.
The more I look at these maps, the more I'm shocked of how weird the lines are. How it's evolved, I get it.
Yeah. So.
So, okay, so you're pushing that line all. All of Albion or just those areas, I'm so sorry, to seventy five feet.
It would be all Albion would go from the hundred shown to seventy five.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
But again, I, this is what I, when I looked at it, this was my opinion, I'm not saying that this is. The the direction unless other people, if other people are okay with that, then. So be it, but I I do wanna make sure that every, you know, I give everyone else the chance to have an opinion on that cuz it's. The group not just what Jim thinks.
So if you burn down the fifty foot offset. You would. Effectively include those back in and still exclude everything on Albion Street. We're not just going to fifty.
Yeah, so if you went to a fit with to a fifty foot offset, you'd probably go, you know, you'd you'd it'd be something like similar to this, right? So the only thing is you, I don't know if you would, well, yeah, you would you would still exclude all the all those. All these ones on Albion.
Mm hmm.
And I don't think you're necessarily picking up anything new.
So really, you could go down to whatever that smallest lot there is on the top, you know, with those really small three.
And you still include that, yeah.
Yeah.
Or exclude them, I mean.
The only, the only thing, the only thing that you wanna make sure you don't do is you don't make it so someone could do an A and R. Have a lot in the front and then sneak something in the back. That's the only, the only thing you don't wanna make, you know what I mean, like in between.
But if they hundred percent have to be within the district, isn't that pretty much impossible to do?
Well, I'm saying if you did an A and R, you took anything that was fronting Albion and then you could find a way to shoehorn a lot behind it. You you know what I mean? If.
What's A and R?
Uh approval not required, basically if they could subdivide it by right. But I guess actually I take it back, they'd have to have frontage.
But if they had subdivision by right, that means. They're likely providing units, so aren't we getting the same results cuz they would be building something else?
I apologize, I I I'm probably overthinking it because I was thinking that if you, if we had this as too shallow, you know, for example. This was the lot, then someone come in and make it so this right here was a buildable lot even, but.
Yeah, but they.
They have that frontage, but if they didn't have frontage on Albion, then I don't think they could actually do an A and R. Cuz one of the prerequisites of having it by right is you have to have frontage.
So the fifty to still exclude a commercial, so I'm just doing the notes, but include original. Parcels on other streets.
Yeah. So well, so Aaron, I think the 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 direction would be to shift. These lines from a hundred to fifty. And then include anything that's included, a hundred percent.
Yep.
So similarly, when I was going through this effort and if that's the direction that we go through, so this parcel was originally excluded. So I think it, the way it's being drawn would be included. So I wanna make sure the group was aware of that and okay with that, and I think the same would actually occur.
There, yeah.
Right here.
Well, I wonder what the square footage of that lot is, but yeah, if it would even, yeah.
Yeah.
The minimum.
That's four thousand square feet or or. If it meets that. So, okay. And then if you're looking at the, if we just go around the rest of this this lot, so all of these would be excluded based on the fact that they front Main Street. And then I think you just come all the way across and then we have a couple more lots on these edges. That look like they would be included where originally they were excluded.
Well, wait a minute, but I thought we were reducing that to seventy five, so they would.
Yeah, so I'm saying if this goes to set, oh, so even if we kept it at a hundred, this was excluded previously. And now it's gonna be.
Wanted to exclude it.
We we had drawn it as excluded, I don't know if we necessarily had intentionally done it. But I that's more of an open question in my mind to the group is, is it, is do we have a defined? Theory of the case, so we should exclude it, or i- is it, we drew it one way. It didn't necessarily have a lot of thought behind it and now we're just making a constant decision.
Yeah, I don't remember making a, I just remember on Armory, you know, there's a Tono building, that lot uh.
It's this big one.
Yeah, and then behind that is their parking currently. So I. They need the parking for the building if I'm I'm looking at that correctly um. I'm just looking at the. And then after that, it's, yeah, I don't know why those other ones are, yeah, that's the parking and then I'm not sure why the other side. Cuz it's currently kind of multi, no, that's not true, there's another parking lot.
Yeah. So I think yeah, theoretically, the those existing parking lots would be included in the multifamily overlay district. If we kept the map as current, you know, this rough draft is, which again. Good, better and different, I just wanted to make sure that people are aware and we, you know, if we need to make a change, cuz we think that there should be. You know, if we think the district should come come back and do something like this, then we just need to make sure that we make that constant decision. But I don't know if I necessarily have a strong opinion one way or the other, it feels to me as if what's drawn on here is fine. As long as we're okay with those additional lots being included.
I'm comfortable with it, that, um again, one person.
For me, I'm fine too.
I'm good.
Yeah, okay, so and then. So then, so that kind of takes care of this district. And then if we could circle back to this um orange district, so we talked about this one going down to fifty feet. On Main Street, so this is where it gets a little wonky, cuz I think that we were doing, I think. Right now, this is drawn as if it's an offset off of Maine as it starts to diverge right here. So your offset gets, you know, it gets progressively shallower and shallower. Uh my guess, and again, one person, so tell me if if everyone disagrees. Is that we actually want this offset to be off of Common Street in order to make sure we're excluding all of these. Units and then there'd be some sort of offset off of Lafayette, so you, you know. Ex, you know, have a section of Town Hall, even though Town Hall is never gonna get redeveloped, but and then. It bumps back to the center line of Common, so it grabs these last two parcels on the the perimeter or the the edge. I think it probably wants to do something like that unless people think that's different.
Good to me.
Would it be possible just to leave out that portion of? Basically that side of Lot B F Street all the way to the church. Um and then rationale for that is try to. Keep that Ch- Church Street corridor a little.
Are you, you're saying do something like that, Matt?
Uh I'm saying eliminate the north side of Lot B completely all the way out. If you take out Church Street.
You mean do something like this?
Yes. I don't know how people feel about, you know, the Church Street corridor there and know um. Heading down towards north is nice, all the store houses in there. Now, I don't know if we're getting able to uh be picky about it, but.
That's an interesting question, so since they have by right, do they still have to adhere to like historical? Requirements, do we have any historical requirements?
There's, I don't think there's like historical all the way down there, so they don't have to.
But anything over fifty years could be, is um you have a demo uh review, so that's not.
Okay.
Right, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Review, but the, you know, it's never stopped anything.
Okay.
Can we afford to lose that many lots?
That's a good question if we're just doing. That meeting compliance, so if we just have the three districts, I'm wondering what, I don't think it would affect if we had the five. But the three, I'm kind of questioning um. I'd have to play around with that, I'd have to play around with all this and see what the numbers start to look like, but I I think we'd be fine, but I.
And Aaron, I think even if for the five, the one other thing is, I don't know where we stood in terms of the contiguous. I think we should be okay, but that's the other thing that, in terms of the five, that I would question.
Oh, the acreage and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
You like the 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 continuous district of the. West, you know, the. I know that this district plus this district have to equal fifty percent, so I don't know if we lose this, if that matters or not, but.
I'd have to put, yeah, I wish I could say I could do that right now, but um. Me and Ezra actually are emailing about some numbers, um so I'd have to play around with that.
Alright, it that was just a thought of mine, I'm trying to.
It's something I can look at, I mean, yeah, it would make the mapping a lot easier um.
And I I think we should have the ants, so. I I would say included, but if public comments is such that there's concern, we should know if it matters, you know what I mean?
So include it for now, but I will find out.
Kind of similar to the parking conversation that we talked about earlier, where it's it's a kind of a known ask to. As we're going through the engagement process of, hey, what do people think? This is something that we think that we have a, you know, we haven't included, we identified it as something we wanna get additional feedback from members of the public. And then we can kind of let let that feedback follow with what we wanna do. Okay, so I think that that does it for kind of the the middle sec- middle districts. Luckily, I think the eastern districts are a lot easier, so I think we can blow through the these. So for this district all the way on the the northeast, so I think it's pretty straightforward, center line of Main Street. Hit center line of Salem Street. Then hit center line of um Pleasant, comes all the way down. The only sections that look like it was a little wonky, that I think we just wanna double check is um. So we got again off of um so off of Water Street and then I forget off the top of my head what this street is. Um Vernon, so we've got this, the hundred foot, it clips this lot right here. So again, if we're talking about going to seventy five or fifty foot offsets, does it make sense to do the same thing here, you know, maybe make this a fifty foot offset? So you make sure you don't clip this district, or sorry, this lot. And then. You know, we have the same fifty foot, so this is excluded. So you'd have fifty, fifty, fifty.
Oh, you're just worried about that part, that small little triangle right there, sorry, I was taking notes um. Yeah, cuz it doesn't affect anything north of that, it's just that small area there, correct?
Correct, so it'd just be this one and this one. So I think that if this goes to fifty.
Yeah, move that one.
Yeah. And then circling background, you had a fifty foot offset off of water, so that excludes this parcel. We'd always include this one and then you're basically getting back onto the center line of Crescent. Which brings you all the way back up to Maine, so it's it's pretty much. Almost all center lines of road except for the one off of Vernon, so I think that one was pretty easy. And then the last one is this one in the southeast corner. You're hitting center line of Water Street, center line of Wakefield Ave. Coming down here, center line of Richardson. And then, Aaron, I I think I have to have your help, I don't know what would be the easiest way over here, there's this kind of. We've got, it looks like the bike path and then there's an M D T right away, so whichever one is the easiest to kind of define. But that felt like that was kind of the easiest one where there's no weird offsets we need to do, it's just kind of. Center line to all the roadways and you include all the residentials and then these other parcels that are kind of excluded because they're not. You know, they're part of right of ways of like infrastructure transit, then they're excluded regardless.
Sorry, you asked me a question, sorry.
No, no, I.
No, yeah, okay.
I'm walking through, if anyone has any questions or comments, anything I just walked through. If if people agree with kind of the generalized concepts, what I propose we do is we give this document to Aaron, we get it drawn up. By our G I S mapping group. And then transmit that final work product to. This group for, you know, uh review and approval and then that we'd use that as the basis of the actual proposed, this is the proposed district. That we could then start the process with town council, planning board, CBA, environmental sustainability committee. And start evangelizing and that would be the basis of the proposed district. To start soliciting feedback.
I think that's a good plan.
Okay, so in that case, Aaron, I'll I'll shoot this over to you, if you have any other questions, please let let, you know, let me know and then let's see if we can get that map. Pushed out to the this group and then if people here are comfortable. What I propose doing is uh Matt and I can bring the, you know, that work product to the planning board at our next meeting and then we can start that process of. Evangelizing what we're, where we're, where we're at on this. Evangelizing what we're where we're we're at on this.
Sounds good.
Awesome.
Okay, well, that's obviously, we haven't, we haven't. We almost have a map, but we have a map, so that's great, so thank you everyone for the effort on that. Um, the other thing I wanted to start, start the conversation and then we're also already an hour into this, but. Um, Aaron pushed over to the group. We've got the the kind of the the starting of a MBTA. Multi-family overlay district, I'm I'm guessing people haven't had a chance to grind through all of this, but there's a handful of things going through. Um earlier that I think high level conversations, we don't need to get into the. Individual wordsmith thing, but. There's a handful of things where, so the way that this is structured right now, basically, we Aaron copy and pasted the uh. MBTA like template from the state. Added some of the language that we decreed upon in terms of some of the actual elements, but. From a structure perspective, there's a handful of things I think we'd like to get some consensus on as we start to. To grind through this, and then I think that I'd like to talk about how we want to actually manage to to write the balance of this going forward. So I'll just kind of go through, we'll have to pace, you know, kind of the overall overall how this is currently written. And then maybe we solicit feedback and then talk about how we're gonna, you know, manage to to write it going forward, so. The way this is written is it's got, you know, this purpose section. I think frankly, it probably would make a lot of sense based on some of the feedback we've gotten as part of the. Um with the the process with Attorney Bobrowski to eliminate some of these things, because I think they're creating standing where we may or may not want it. Um but then you go into establishment and applicability. So I think these from kind of a quick overview, these seem pretty straightforward. Definitions, I don't know if we necessarily want a whole definition section, which you can see is relatively lengthy. Um buried within our multifamily overlay district, it feels to me as if we're gonna have definitions. They want to be part of the definitions for that we already have the base zoning. Put it all in one, you know, having multiple sections where you have different definitions seems like a recipe for confusion. Um, they've got permitted uses, so the the um. The the big thing here is there's a question whether or not it wants to be planning board or GPA, if there's a site plan review. Defining what the site plan review is gonna be. Dimensional standards, a lot of these we've already talked about at length, um it in most of these, it seems like. They're um basically copying and pasting from our. Compliance model, so I don't think there's a ton of that, the only question is that if we wanted to have this as a standalone. Or if we wanted again bake this into the table that or or we already have a dimensional standard table. So the question is, does it make sense to just have the MBT overlay districts part of that or to have it set in its own separate section? Um then you get into parking similarly.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
For the um. The overlay, that's the mixed-use overlay. What's is the format such that information is in that section or references updated data elsewhere on the zoning?
So that's that's the decision we need to make.
No, 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 and the uh the one that we have, so then, sorry, I said multifamily, I meant the um.
Oh, the mixed-use?
Yeah.
So the mixed-use in general uh is um. It references the other portions of the zoning where so it's all in one spot.
One thing to keep in mind with this section, though, is it's different in the fact that this.
Have to make changes.
Yeah, if we make changes to say, I don't know, I was trying to come up with something uh. If something's include, if we include the the um setbacks and stuff in the regular. Table, if we make changes elsewhere in that table, it applies to this, so that it'll be re-reviewed by the state, even if we're not. Making changes to what we would consider the MBTA communities, because it's 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 in the same. Section of the bylaw, so they'll review it.
If you make another column on that chart.
They would likely review it, yes.
I believe they're gonna review any changes to the zoning for compliance with this regardless, though, is is it correct, Aaron?
Yeah, but then it would go to like a separate arm with the forty-eight. Like when you're doing the zoning change, they still go to the AG, but then this specific thing would still have to go to the forty-eight regulation, whatever that is. Um.
But I thought I had to go to the forty-eight regulation regardless, they have to do even like a pro forma check.
They do, yeah.
Yeah, but if it's pro forma and then, but if it's in the. My, I guess my worry is with this, if if it is in the table, they may say, well, it's in the it's in the table, it's not in its own standalone section, so we're gonna fully review it. And then it then it's a whole, whereas if we keep this as, you know, not a completely plug and play, because obviously that's just. You know, hard to manage it in in and of itself. Um but try to keep as much as possible in this section, then we know. Okay, yes, this really is a change to the MBTA communities overlay district. And it will be, you know, in-depth reviewed, it'll be more than a pro forma review and and keep it separate. So if we have like even back to the definitions, if we have uh as many definitions in here as needed, not as possible, but as as needed. Um right in here rather than. Um in the definition section of the bylaw, uh uh the bylaw review committee also will might have their own.
Ideas.
You know, ideas, but I think they need to understand that aspect of it.
But they've said that they won't help us with this, right, because they're not there yet.
I think they can still provide review, correct, if just when it come from those bylaw review committee to go to the town meeting. I would hope.
I think I think that the bylaw review committee, if we give, I think they won't include this in the recalcification. Because the it's not part of the, or let me rephrase. The recalcification is on a timeline that's significantly longer potentially than what we're we're on for, so I think that. What will likely happen is that we'll have to get to the end in terms of this rewrite, and my my hope is that we'll be able to have. This bylaw when we get to it be finals finalized, we would give it to the bylaw review committee for their check. But then my guess is that they're gonna re-review it as part of the recalcification process with Attorney Bobrowski.
Can we ask them a fundamental question on formatting before we send it to them, just to ask them if. They see a difference between whether it's hundred percent standalone versus incorporation?
I think that's probably something we could do.
Yeah, we want to have Dan Leeber come to fifteen minutes at this to say, hey, but and I not even necessarily ask, hey, we're doing this.
Yeah, do do they see a problem with it, or does it cause problems based on seeing the big picture, I guess. I get that they won't necessarily vote and and scrutinize it, but just on a on a high level formatting. Where do they, you know, what are their thoughts on it?
Um and just to note too, so one ninety thirty-two is what the ZBA, the the mixed-use overlay district. They, that's currently baked into their own into one ninety thirty-two, the dimensional regulations um. Section there.
I don't know what that means, Aaron, why?
Sorry, so the multifamily mixed-use overlay district we already have.
Yeah.
Not called out in our current table of uses um table, it's its own separate. Table, if you will, within the one ninety thirty-two, which is the. All all the information on our mixed-use multifamily overlay, so it has. The lot coverage, open area, lot frontage within that section, not within our overall.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
It might make sense.
It kind of, it kind of does, it does, it ha- it ta- the mixed-use takes different approaches for different things. So for the parking, for example, I believe it just completely defers whole cloth to the base layer. Parking requirements, but the dimensional requirements, you're right, it does have it contained within it. So I I I think it's just the, it honestly, this is a decision point that we need to make as a group, I you know, I. If you just let me go through the rest of it, I think we should circle back and think about how we want to address this, but I think Robin, you've hit kind of on one of the main. Decision points we as a group need to hit on this. Um but the other, the other thing is kind of, I think the next biggest thing we need to figure out is there's these general development standards. And there's all this, you know, kind of uh example requirements in terms of, you know, site design. Sidewalks being provided vehicular access in terms of curb cuts. There's a placeholder for open space requirements, anything boutique above and beyond the thirty-five percent minimum. Parking materials, plantings, lighting, stormwater management. How you cite the buildings, corn lots. Comments on facade, parking. You know, and then there's, you know, a comment about waivers, which can be provided as part of the site plan approval, so any of these types of. Design criterion, for lack of a better term, or design standards, something that we would probably need to think about. Because if you're doing this as a as a right, it's not like there's a discretionary ZBA review where you can comment. So as long as someone meets all these requirements, theoretically, they're entitled to a building permit. So I think this is the other component of how deep or how how deep or not do we want to go for buildings of this scale, you know? Do we want a site plan review that includes a facade or architectural review for a, you know, a four. Unit three-story building, or are we comfortable with, you know, basically letting? As long as anyone meets the dimensional requirements, they can build whatever they want, as long as. They get the building permit, so I think that's the other decision point that we need to figure out is how far down that rabbit hole do we want to go or not go? And then, you know, figure out who would adjudicate those those site plan reviews. Um and then just quickly going through the rest of it, then the get into the site plan review, what is that that actually look like? Submission requirements, applicability, so some of the stuff we probably would take, you know, from some of our previous other sections of the bylaws, copy paste. Some of the, you know, what we're looking for from a documentation perspective, if we want to go through the site plan review process. And then um you know, some stuff in terms of project phasing, which may or may not be required required. I think it probably wouldn't be, because this looks like it's to try to get away from affordability requirements, but that's generally the way the bylaws written, you know, just. Structure-wise, so yeah, I think the the thing I'd love to kind of. Open up the conversation is, you know, in terms of, we've got some components in terms of how we structure the bylaw. How we want to finish writing it, and then I think really it's a site plan review is kind of the, those are kind of the big buckets in my mind. And so I don't have a distinct thought process in terms of how to adjudicate those, so it'd be interesting kind of opening the floor and figuring out how other people think in terms of. The best way to start facilitating those conversations, I also don't think we need to finish this bylaw. Writing process until we're a little bit closer, I think we can start the the maps, I think that's really what people are gonna be focused on from a. You know, passing this to Town Hall or Town Meeting, rather. Prospect and some of the, you know, the base, you know, summary things, but I think some of the other elements in here, I think we just need to start. Start that process and kind of defining how we want to work, do that workflow.
It's a detail, but I love the text talks about plantings and not letting people use prohibited plants, but that's just something I have a personal passion about of. Getting more native stuff. It may be unique in Wakefield if we slip it in, but. I do like it.
I I like it, I like, you know, Matt, what you said early on in the process was kind of outdoor livings, you know, outdoor areas. Patios, did now, things like that, not patios, um porches or, I don't know. And clearly I love the bicycle parking.
I I think um through the issue we had a couple of years ago where people were kind of locked up. You need to build in that you you need to get outdoors a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of these con- condominiums have been built, they're they're all contained and there's no.
Right.
No space to even open a window, so I think we should try to definitely have that.
Yeah, I know that the the base had. The base example had, you know, this building shared outdoor space clause, so I think. Kind of my baseline understanding from all the conversations is that there probably is some sort of. Set of stand, you know, design standards, I'm guessing we probably want to bake into this based on previous conversations. Um in terms of, I I don't know if anyone on this board has a particular passion for trying to define what those might want to be in terms of those standards. Uh and or if there's other members that we want to engage in town staff, I'm thinking like maybe the. Ben to Christopher or Bill Renault might be good resources to to start that process um. You know, I think that that, and then figuring out who's gonna actually review any proposed plan against that. And then the other question I would have is that, is this something that, is there a threshold where if it's a single family home? Do we want to put them through a site plan review versus a fourth four? Unit house.
Well, single family home ever be built under this, or they they would just build a family home as a break? I know this is as of right, but it's not multifamily.
Fair enough, fair enough, you're 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 actually, yeah, that's that's a fair fair point.
And I think if we do have.
Three or four, right?
Yeah, if we do have site plan review ability, I would say why we should definitely use it.
Yeah.
I don't know why we wouldn't want to use it now, yeah, like you said, defining how deep we want to go, I. It it is just site plan review, it's not special permit, so it doesn't have, even site plan review, if we do go, you know, I guess deep and to keep a facade. Review type in there, it's still only site plan review, so it, you know, it still could be. I I would think in and that keeping it as as much control as we have would also help us. Um you know, explain this and sell this too. Yeah, I I think in the selling this whole thing, saying that, you know, there is some backstops that. Someone will be looking at what's going in, it's just not gonna be. Couple ship containers stacked on there, seven column of dead, so I I think we need to have, I think we need to have that. Hopefully, it'll be, you know, quick and easy and not too painful, but. Um I think the first couple that are done would set the standards for the rest coming in, so people would know. You bring in a a design that. It's cohesive and makes sense, you shouldn't have any issues, you're gonna try to. Pushing in the road by being as cheap as possible and spend as much in there.
Maybe we could all go through this document and kind of like mark off the ones that we think. We might want to see how they line up. Or when we're going out to public and and other committees, kind of have a slide or two that kind of list the main ones. Maybe we take a first shot at what we want and then see what other people want.
So I think what I'm hearing just generally is um. I think folks want to get feedback from the bylaw review committee related to the some of the formatting elements.
That's right.
Um. And then in terms of the the. Site plan review, sounds like there's strong consensus that we want to keep it. And find a way to make it work for our for our community. So now the question just becomes, how do we develop those design standards and then define what that process looks like? The AHJ for that as well as the uh um, you know, those different elements, so it sounds like. I think Julie, I think your your comment in terms of maybe. A, taking a, having this group take a stab at looking at that. Coming together and figuring out what makes sense, and then soliciting feedback in terms of some of the high-level elements as we start to. Push this to Town Council, Planning Board, CBA, environmental sustainability, makes a lot of sense, so. If people feels if that feel that's appropriate, I think that makes a lot of sense, it's kind of a to do is have everyone read it. Get smarter on it, start listening to feedback, and then Aaron, maybe maybe we can start that conversation. Offline with Bill and Ben in terms of what they would like to see, since they're gonna have the, you know, managing. Components of this as well, and then try to solicit as much of that information, and then maybe we we convene. At our next meeting, and and that's the next thing I want to conduct to is the cadence of meetings on a go-forward basis. And then we can kind of start that as the the manner of trying to. Put together some feedback so we can kind of formulate something.
To obviously, I'll take your your Matt's input on and just to bring up tonight, because I have a zoning board meeting tomorrow night that. Assume if it doesn't go five hours, I could talk about with them is the authority for special permit to. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like it's. Right up planning boards alley rather than ZBAs, but I mean, I'm sort of indifferent. You guys are both have more experience in that area than I do. Or maybe you're maybe you're a different too, I don't know.
No, I was envisioning um. Kind of spreading out because ZBA is.
Yeah, I I personally, I thought that it would make a lot of sense that based on the relative. What's currently on the ZBA's docket versus the planning board's docket, and the fact this is a site plan, my thought would be. They'd go towards planning board, but I know I've heard, I think it depends on who you ask and how close to the process they are currently. Depending on who they think they should go to.
So it seems like the three of us though are. On the same, I'll bring it up, I I think I brought it up a few weeks ago, we actually had a meeting, get out at like nine a few weeks ago, so I brought it up before then. And it seemed like. At least the people who. Uh, you know, chimed in, thought it was, you know, being squarely site review. Site plan review, it was, you know, planning board made more sense than zoning board, so, but I'll I'll bring it up. Sort of a again to actually discuss tomorrow night, or at least at our next meeting, but hopefully tomorrow night. And get a better. You know, better answer for you guys.
Okay, I think that makes a lot of sense, and and we'll bring it up to the planning board when we present the what we have so far. So I think what I'd like to do, if if other folks feel feel, I I think I'd like, I'm I'll reach out to Dan Lieber. See if I can get some feedback and maybe else have a sidebar with him to kind of. Get some general level feedback, so we don't have to get into the minutia with the. The plan or the bylaw review committee at this time, because I'm sure that we'll have a turn where we do that later on. Um, and then we. Um, if we if everyone's kind of starts, you know, looking through this and kind of identifies the components that we think. Makes some sense in terms of what we'd have as our design standards, Aaron and I can work with Bill and Ben to see what they would be interested in. Uh, what I'm gonna propose to do is I I think that biweekly for. Working on just the the bylaw is probably a little too quick of a turn, I think we probably could move more towards a. A monthly meeting cadence, if folks feel comfortable with that, um. And then what I'd also propose on doing is after, I work, I'll work with Aaron to finalize the maps based on the feedback we have. Validate the the information and then start the process of, you know, getting on the books with all the relevant. Towns and uh, boards and councils um, within town, starting to put together kind of a comprehensive um, presentation. That maybe maybe we circle up at our next meeting and review if you view as a group. If we have a consensus, then we'll start scheduling some of those kind of outreach.
Sounds good to me.
So I think based on that, what that would look like and. Uh, is that we would potentially have another meeting on the twelfth. Right? The twelfth of September, if that, I'm sorry, is that the right, yeah, I think it's the twelfth of September would be the next. Meeting for with this group, and then at that meeting, we would review the map. Circle up in terms of some of the um, site plan elements, and then hopefully based on that, we could start the process of. Um, pushing this out, the the maps at least to. All the other relevant boards and councils in in town and then start that public engagement process.
If we're doing monthly meetings, would it be possible to move? To a different Tuesday, so we don't have this and then zoning board the next day, between that. Three little kids and not getting home till two minutes before the meeting. I'm sort of. Pushing the whole life.
What are you saying, you don't have, you have a life outside of being a nice public servant?
Not right now, not right now, I know.
Dare all of you. Um, so well, the planning board, so you said the twelfth. So, actually. No, we would be the plane board would be meeting the twelfth gym, so we would be meeting, um. And then the DBA is the thirteenth, correct, Greg?
Yeah.
So it would, how about the nineteenth, the nineteenth, because you're on the.
Yeah.
Second and fourth Wednesday, we're on the second and fourth. So. So we could either do. No, well, labor, after Labor Day might be a little tricky, I know. I have a life out, you know, back in school and all that jazz too, um, so. From my perspective, I would recommend maybe the week of the, maybe the nineteenth.
And that's essentially a month from today anyway, so that gets us into the monthly meetings, right? Would hopefully give everyone enough time to review the bylaw, get their comments to you. Or questions or whatever they are.
If the if the nineteenth works for folks, then. That that works for myself, um. And we can just kind of set these on an ad hoc basis on the go-forward basis, you know, kind of roughly of a monthly cadence. Okay. So, just to summarize before we before we I I, um, sure, we move towards um, adjournment. I'll reach out to the bylaw review committee, we'll look at as a group, site plan reviews, see if we can get some feedback. Re-convene in about a month, and then um, Aaron and I will work to try to finalize the map based on all the comments or the conversations we've had. Any other items that we needed work on as a group before we start the wrapping up process? Okay, uh, and then the only other thing is, uh, Aaron, did you, did you get um, feedback related to meeting minutes if we have as?
Uh, I just got um. Basically. More or less, just if we can hold on just till uh, we we vote, but um, if I can post them, I will, but that's pretty much. Uh, what I got right now, but I didn't go into much detail about it, because then I had to start taking notes, so. If I can post them, I'll let the group know, uh, with saying pending, uh, but right now I cannot.
I had a chance to look at him, so I'm I'm comfortable voting.
The video goes up anyways, though, right?
Yeah, it goes up like tomorrow or or the next day, yeah.
Well, this is last meeting, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Matt Lowry.
Yes.
Julie Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Aaron Kokinda.
Yeah.
Robin Greenberg.
Yes.
Greg McIntosh.
Yes.
And yes to me, so thank you everyone for the time and.
Sorry, who was first, I'm sorry, and then second, sorry.
Oh, I motioned Robin.
Robin. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sounds good, thank you everyone.